Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work Studies Session. Item number one is called Order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Item number two was called to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for issue review session items and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Let's see. Madam Clerk, are there any comment cards we need to read into record?
Yes. Would you like to take only 3A or 3A and 3B at this time?
Let's take them all. Why not?
Just one each.
A whopping two.
This one is for item 3A for the Sky Harbor Camp item, and it's submitted by Merrill Darcy, representing Riverside. His comments are as follows. "Sky Harbor is asking for support after issuing mailers threatening that air traffic will increase over Tempe if the intergovernmental agreement is compromised. Sky Harbor is trying to assess what they have and are trying to encompass all their assets. Air cargo needs to be relocated to the west side of Phoenix and has no regard for any train rail passengers who again have to rely on surface roads to enter Sky Harbor, increasing more traffic through I-10 and Tempe." That concludes his comments. Next card is item 3B, and this is submitted by Hannah Moulton-Bellic, representing the Neighborhood Advisory Commission. She writes, "Mayor and council, I wanted to comment on the street and park renaming committee update. I was fortunate to serve on this ad hoc committee and wanted to speak to the deliberate and thoughtful process and consideration that the group gave to this task. We didn't agree on everything, but we did agree that we wanted to take a restorative approach to renaming these parks and streets. The names you'll see presented have significance to Tempe and the Valley while honoring the goal of restoration and education. I urge you to accept the recommendations for these streets and parks and also for the short list we identified for future naming opportunities. We were lucky to have so many great Tempe people to choose from, and we hope that the additional list will be considered for any future naming opportunities. This was an incredibly emotional and meaningful task for the ad hoc committee members. I hope you're proud of the results. Thank you." And that concludes the comments.
Thank you, Kara. Really appreciate it. I will go one last time to the audience to see if there's anyone else on item 3A, which is Sky Harbor Airport Comprehensive Asset Management Plan Overview, and/or item 3B, which is the Street and Park Renaming Committee Update. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, please get my attention now. Yes, please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council. And then, sir, I'll take you right afterwards at the back.
My name is Yolanda Potter, and I am a resident of Phoenix, but I'm here to speak on behalf of my sister, the late Michelle Brooks Tatress. And first of all, I want to say, I want to address you, Mayor Woods, and thank the council for considering my sister. I just want to reiterate, in addition to what the family has submitted, I just want to say my sister was a person of vision and passion, and she put a lot of work into the city of Tempe and to the children in the school district here and a lot of committees. And she was a person who lived by the quote, I'm going to quote, the late Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness; only light can do that." And that's what my sister's life exemplified, and thank you for considering her in the park renaming project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next speaker, Mr. Brooks. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
I want to thank the mayor and the council first. I've been a resident here since 1969, and I just want to thank you guys for recognizing Michelle. Michelle was a person that gave others before she gave herself. And one of the things that excited me about this nomination is I was a park and recreation director, not director, manager in Scottsdale for 30 years, and I retired in '95. And I would never thought my daughter would come up with a situation like this by me, you know, that being my background. But I just thank you guys for, you know, giving this opportunity, and I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Mr.
I'm a father.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on items 3A or 3B? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the agenda and move on to item three, which is the issue review session portion. Item 3A is the Sky Harbor Airport Comprehensive Asset Management Plan Overview, and I will look to Chad McCuskey, the Director of Aviation Services at the city of Phoenix, and his team for a presentation. Good to see you again.
It's good to see you, Mayor, and members of council. I'm Chad McCuskey, Director of Aviation for the city of Phoenix Aviation Department. As you said, I apologize upfront. I do have a little bit of a cough. I promise you, I went to my doctor, and he said I'm cleared, but it's been lingering for over a month, and I don't know how to get rid of it. So I wanted to, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to come and present to all of you today, just to talk a little bit about what's happening at Sky Harbor Airport and what the future holds for the airport. We think this is important. It's actually part of our strategic plan, upcoming strategic plan, is to get out into neighboring communities and make sure that we're more proactive and intentional about sharing what's happening at the airport and getting feedback from community leaders as well, so we can plan accordingly. So before we begin, if you'd indulge me, I'd just love to introduce a couple of members of my team who are with me today. Assistant Aviation Director and Chief Development Officer Jay DeWitt is with me. If you could raise your hand, Jay. Deputy Aviation Director over Planning and Environmental, and he is going to be my co-presenter today. Jordan Feld is with us. Deputy Aviation Director over Public Relations, Julie Rodriguez is with us in the audience. And Assistant Chief Counsel Carolina Potts is with us as well. So we've got a small but mighty team that helps us keep the airport running every day. So I'll move on to the presentation here. So while owned and operated by the city of Phoenix, Sky Harbor Airport is, as we like to frequently share, is a regional and a statewide economic asset, and we really think it's our responsibility to take care of it with that principle in mind. Our history actually dates back to 1928, when scenic airlines owner Parker Van Zant built an airfield on a property so rural it was nicknamed "The Farm." And the city has acquired that land in 1935. They did it for $100,000. I wish I could even find a house for $100,000 nowadays, but it's pretty amazing. It seems like a bargain. And today, Sky Harbor Airport has grown to be the eighth busiest airport in the United States and 11th busiest in the world, making it Arizona's largest economic engine as we support tourism, trade, and travel, and connect really the community to the world. So we're really proud of that, and we continue to try to do our best to serve the local community. As an enterprise fund department, though, within the city of Phoenix, no local taxpayer dollars go to support the airport. You use the services, you pay for the services, and those monies are invested in the airport. We operate on a pretty straightforward P&L basis. In fact, you will find that really the work that we do, it goes back to serving not only the capital investments that we make at our airport, but also the services that we provide to both the travelers as well as the community. So in way of some recent developments, in spite of all of the challenges associated with the pandemic, Sky Harbor commissioned more than $1 billion of new assets over the last year to support our travelers and the local community. To highlight a couple, we commissioned a new eight-gate concourse in Terminal Four for Southwest Airlines. The new concourse has won multiple Innovation and Environmental Excellence Awards that spotlight our commitment to being among the most sustainable airports in the world. In fact, just this year, Sky Harbor Airport achieved the Airport Carbon Accreditation Level Four, as certified by Airports Council International, and we're one of only three airports in the United States and less than a dozen around the world that's achieved this distinction. So we're very proud of that and really representing and embodying the values of the community we serve. And we recently published our roadmap to achieving campus-wide net-zero carbon emissions by 2040, which is nearly a decade ahead of both UN goals as well as industry goals. With a new concourse comes some great new concessions, and keeping on the theme that's really worked well for us is really showcasing the best that we have in the community, in the local community. We really do a lot of small business outreach to continue to emphasize local and regional concepts in our concessions offerings. And if I'm not mistaken, City Manager Ching reminded me of this, that Pedal House Brewery actually got its start right here in Tempe. I think Changing Hands Bookstore is also here in Tempe, and so we're really proud to showcase these concepts as a part of our concessions family at the airport. If you could advance it. Let me tell you more about our concessions.
I do like food, so.
Yeah. I was warned not to talk about EGs because it's a Tucson concept, but it's a cult classic. Everybody seems to be really excited about EGs coming up.
I was gonna say, me too. I'm all about EGs.
That's fantastic. Any questions?
It's hard.
Oh.
It's like, where's the Jeopardy sound?
Well, this happens to all of us, trust me.
It's gonna reboot here, it looks like.
No worries. I promise I did not put a virus in the presentation, so.
I was gonna ask, Kara, do you have the presentation when you're in?
Yes.
I wonder, this way, you could...
Yes, I do, but I believe it's a network connection, because I was trying to send you, resend you the presentation, so.
Huh. So apparently, there's an issue with the network as a whole, and so normally, I would just say, let's just do it locally, but then the problem is people who are watching online might not be able to see, which would, then I will get hate mail all night, so.
Typing one now, Mayor.
Is that Randy?
Counselor McKee?
Yeah. I'm typing that hate mail, though.
Mayor, if I will, if I may, if we could have a little, short little break, figure it out a little bit, if you wouldn't mind.
Five, 10 minutes, what do you think?
Yes, sir. That'll be perfect.
Let's do about 10 minutes, then. We'll come back at 4:25. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you.
Is this movie that I think you like? This guy decides to quit his job and head to New York City. This cowboy is running from himself. She's been living on the highest shelf. Oh. And they come unstuck. Lady, running down to the riptide, taken away to the dark side.[1051.83]
Right at 4:25 PM, my goodness. It was the EG slide, it was real.
I was afraid of that comment.
That's what it was. All right. Welcome back, Mr. Makovsky.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, just ready when you are.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, and so now that we're talking about concessions, I just wanted to touch on another exciting development, which was in December of this last year, we commissioned a new 2.5-mile segment of the Phoenix Skytrain. And so this really, this new amenity has transformed how we transport customers who use our airport to and from the terminals to the rental car center. A very, a large percentage of our customers come to the Valley. They want to go to the Grand Canyon, they like to rent cars, and so that rental car center is very popular. It's taken more than 80 buses off of our roadways. It's freed up terminal curb space, and it's provided for a much more timely, reliable, and environmental-friendly option for our customers. And, you know, the thing I wanted to really emphasize here, though, is our airport, it packs a big punch for its size. It's only 3,400 acres in size, and it's not Denver, it's not DFW. If you think of Denver, for example, on a geographic basis, if you look at the size or the footprint of Sky Harbor Airport, you could actually put 10 Sky Harbor airports inside the footprint of Denver International Airport. You could put six of them inside the DFW International Airport. And so Congressman Stanton was at an event, and he said something that really caught my attention. I'd wanted to share it with you all today. He said that the reason why so many people and businesses love Sky Harbor is because of its convenient and central location, and we consistently hear that as well from our customers. But in order to protect the asset, we have to be, ensure we're thoughtful about development plans both on and around the airport. Instead of physically growing larger, we just need to make sure we're all growing smarter. And so there is no such thing as greenfield development at the airport. Anytime we want to build something, we actually have to move something out of the way. And you're going to see some of that in the presentation when Mr. Feld actually comes up and speaks to you. And so in 2015, we embarked on an airport master plan, and that really guided the development over the next 15 to 20 years. That plan was approved and accepted by the FAA in 2019. We call it the 2019 Comprehensive Asset Management Plan, or CAMP. And then the pandemic hit us, and the air travel industry was hit particularly hard. And as I returned to Sky Harbor Airport in 2021, I felt it was really important that we revalidate that 2019 plan, because our world had changed, and our forecast assumptions changed. And so we wanted to revalidate all of that. I also felt it was important that we develop a solid plan of finance that guided our development over the next five years. And the result of that is what we call the 2022 CAMP update. So you're going to hear us talking about two different programs, the 2019 CAMP, and then the 2022 update to that plan. And so now I'd like to turn it over, the presentation, over to Jordan Feld, who's going to take you through some of the elements of both of those plans. Jordan?
Thanks, Chad. Mayor, members of council, again, really appreciate this opportunity today. I wanted to quickly talk about just airport master planning and kind of where we've been with that at Sky Harbor. Many of you will recall the 1989 master plan update. That was our last full master plan update for the airport, and it called for North Runway, which did not go over very well with community members, both east, west, north, south, and everywhere else around the airport. But just to kind of set the framework here, you know, master plans, just like the city's general plan. So you're looking at future growth, what's going to happen, and how do we want to manage that growth over time? The master plan for an airport pretty much does the same thing. So forecasting, needs, future growth, how to manage it. So since 1989, we've done several different, kind of like functional studies, or small mini-master plans that focused on specific issues. One of the ones important to this discussion this evening is our 2015 Airfield Safety Enhancement Study, which recommended the Crossfield taxiway on the west end of the airport that we'll show a diagram of. Moving forward, as Chad mentioned, by 2019, our full master plan update, the CAMP, had been adopted. Of course, extensive stakeholder process went into that, and that plan set forth a 20-year vision for the airport with a cost of around $6 billion, all told, those investments over the 20 years. And sure enough, as soon as we started to implement that thing, COVID struck, and that obviously had many negative effects on all of society, and certainly had an effect on the airport. And as Chad mentioned, that really caused a lot of us to go back and rethink our near and long-term plans. And then in 2022, we updated CAMP again as the passenger activity returned to normal levels. And that update from 2022 really serves as kind of a near-term implementation plan for the airport. So I promise I won't show any more graphs like this. This is the one nerdy moment. So what you're looking at here is the forecast for the airport. On the left, the blue numbers are annual passengers, and on the right, the purple are our operations. And so you can see that the graph is covering from 1990 to our, you know, forecast years today and forward. And the things to take away, besides the growth that you're seeing in the forecast, which is about 45 million annual passengers today to about 70 million annual passengers in the future, and about 450,000 operations, moving up to possibly 650,000 operations. So those are key takeaways. But the primary takeaway is really the trend you're seeing, which is passenger growth continuing to go up. And if you look at the operations between 1990 and the forecast 2040 year, you see less growth. So basically, more people on planes, the airlines have gotten much more smart about making sure the planes are full, there aren't people, you know, when was the last time you got on a plane and your row was empty for you to, you know, put your bag on? So that will continue to happen. We'll continue to see high passenger growth, pretty moderate, or leveling off operations growth. So the 2019 CAMP process, I mentioned the extensive stakeholder involvement process, the three-year planning period, and the number of meetings we had. Different members of the Tempe community, different stakeholders were invited to participate in that process. We can certainly talk about that in more detail. Versus the 2022 CAMP implementation planning or update, where, again, because of COVID, it was all virtual meetings. We did do virtual presentations to the Tempe AV, the TAVCO, a couple of times to make sure Tempe was remaining in the loop on key issues. And that process, again, as you'll see here on the next few slides, the 2022 process, focused on some very specific things. So here's the 2019 CAMP map, or our airport layout plan, which is kind of the map product of an airport master planning effort. What you're seeing in the middle of the map is the construction of a west terminal, which is not there today. The construction of the west terminal, which would have anywhere from 45 to upwards of 60 new gates, depending on the type of aircraft that would use the terminal in the future, was in direct response to that forecasted growth. And we didn't expect to build the west terminal in the near term. It was seen as a 10- to 20-year project. But to get ready for that meant we had to get a lot of stuff out of the terminal core area. So west of Terminal 3, you'll recall, the old Terminal 2, and there's a lot of cargo operations in that area, and back-of-house stuff. So we had to kind of be creative about this. And so to achieve that, we looked at relocating a lot of the back-of-the-house stuff, as well as all of the cargo, to the north side of the airport, along Washington. So what you're seeing on the north side of the map is a relocated and expanded cargo complex that would replace what we have on the south side of the field today. And just east of that, you can see where, just east of Honeywell, where the old track is and the flea market is today. We would begin to redevelop that with the back-of-the-house uses away from the airfield. I promise I won't keep slapping that microphone. And all of that, again, would kind of free up room for terminal expansion, as well as a key thing on the south side of the field. By moving the cargo to the north, we could meet, we could meet the growth demands of the Air National Guard. Today, they fly the KC-135, which first entered service in 1957. Those planes are still flying in the US Air Force as refuelers, a critical mission. And if you think about all the bases and different kind of military activity in our state in the southwest, kind of critical to that operation. So the Department of Defense is very interested in replacing those aging refuelers with the KC-46. Those planes are bigger, but not as noisy, so that's good. But because they're bigger, they have a wider wingspan, they take up more room. And of course, the DoD would like to have more of those planes than the current KC-135 allotment that's there today. So we had to make room for that. So that's another kind of underpinning of everything you're seeing on this pretty aggressive $6 billion, move-the-musical-chairs-around plan. I probably should have started with the more cartoonish, easier-to-look-at map version of all that. But it's useful in noting the key linchpin in all of this is the Union Pacific Railroad. To put air cargo along Washington is to be able to trench the railroad. And negotiations began immediately after the 2019 process. Through COVID, we continued to negotiate, but ultimately, those negotiations didn't go the way we had expected. But to show you kind of what the grand vision would have been under CAMP 2019. Again, COVID hit. That really forced us to change how we thought about near-term capital planning and projects. So in 2022, we completed a revow, or an update of the planning program for the airport. And here are the five key projects that came out of that process. And I'll walk through these in pretty quick detail over the next few slides, so please, if we want to go back, if you want to stop me, please don't be shy. So the first project, we still have near-term passenger growth that we have to deal with. So the best way to address that was adding a second concourse to Terminal 3, which is what you're seeing here today. That ramp space that's just east of the north concourse today is essentially a back-of-the-house operation for American. It's where they do a lot of their cargo facility and sorting. So we'll be moving Americans' back-of-the-house stuff off of that ramp and completing this new concourse, which could, again, depending on aircraft size and configuration, could be anywhere from six to nine gates. Oh, and I left off a key attribute of that project. You're seeing a connector post-security from Terminal 3 to Terminal 4. That will be a great amenity for all of us, the flying public, to be able to move between the terminals and not have to leave the secured area and come back in, particularly if you're trying to connect to a flight. So I mentioned we have to relocate a lot of American Airlines's stuff over to their maintenance hangar on the east end of the airport, and you're seeing the concept for that here. I talked about the importance, in terms of safety and efficiency, for the west Crossfield taxiway. Again, on our airport today, there is no way to really get north and south on the airfield on the west end. So it creates a bottleneck, which creates more air emissions, which is a regional problem. So it's a great project, but again, it's going through some cargo operations, some of the back-of-the-house operations for the airport. So we needed to come up with a plan for relocating those things. And so here you're seeing where the old Terminal 2 was, and that ramp that's still there, relocating the cargo operations over to that area, kind of shifting them. Eventually, that area would be the west terminal in, you know, maybe 15 or 20 years, but it's a good investment for now. A novel project that came out of this, as we worked with airlines and the FAA, we heard a lot that there were new FAA policies and airline operating procedures that basically said, during the hottest days, the pilot must request to use the longest runway at the airport, at any airport, generically. At our airport, the longest runway is the north runway, which is primarily a landing runway, not a departure runway. So that kind of creates some airfield inefficiencies. And potentially, over time, as more planes would request that north runway, it's important to Tempe and Phoenix, because more departures off the north runway, you could see a difference in the shape of the noise contour from that, really. You know, our current noise exposure is very much based on the fact that the departures are going off the center runway, which is more or less lined up with the Salt River. So that, you know, is good for noise. Putting the departure activity on the north runway is bad for noise. So we often get the question, well, you know, if you're going to extend the runway, surely you're going to create more noise somewhere for somebody? And probably not. Our mayor often would tell me, under-promise, over-deliver. So I'll say this in public, but we'll see how it goes. Notice on this map, the runway extension is 389 feet to the east and 800 feet to the west. So in theory, planes will start their roll on departure 800 feet farther away from Tempe. And again, this is a requirement in policy. It's not as if the planes actually need the longer length to get off the ground. So in theory, there could actually be a noise reduction on the departure contour over Tempe, as well as Phoenix, right? So if they're starting their roll 400 feet farther to the west, or excuse me, to the east as they go west, you could see a minor noise decrease. Kind of wrapping up here, one of the biggest complaints we get from everyone is the traffic, trying to get to the terminals through Sky Harbor Boulevard, which is open to the public. We get a lot of cut-through traffic. So we looked at an interim way to kind of free up some of that congestion, add some lanes. So what you're seeing here is a concept where we would convert the north side of Sky Harbor Boulevard to all eastbound and create a new roadway to the south there that would carry all that westbound traffic. So that would be good for traffic safety and getting to and out of the airport. And lastly here, the update included a concept for a Terminal 4 hotel, and you're seeing a very basic rendering on the slide here. We're still studying this. This would be a four-star hotel with upwards of 500 rooms. We'd likely do it in two phases. So as far as next steps on these newer projects, the T3-N2 concourse, as well as the connector and taxiway uniform, the west taxiway, I should say, are part of an ongoing NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act, environmental assessment that we're working on right now. I would expect the public draft to go out to Tempe this spring, so you all have an opportunity to review the projects in detail, the environmental impacts, and provide comments. The runway extension will require an EIS, environmental impact statement, which is a much longer process. So we likely wouldn't even start that for another year or so, and it'll probably take about three or four years to complete. The roadway projects are likely not subject to NEPA. We can complete those fairly quickly. And the T4 Hotel will require a categorical exclusion and some additional study, feasibility studies as well. Categorical exclusions, it's like a six-month EAG, basically. So with that, we went through that really quick. I'd be happy to go back and look at any of the slides, but with that, I'd call Chad back.
I'd take cues as well. So thank you, Jordan. And, you know, I just wanted to wrap up with just some final thoughts, and that's that, you know, we're really proud of the role that we serve to be an economic driver for the region and the state. But we also recognize that the airport's a noisy machine, and it carries impacts on surrounding communities. And the FAA, the airport, the city of Phoenix, we are doing our part, we're committed to continuing to do our part. We've invested hundreds of millions of dollars in, you know, noise mitigation and remediation. We continue to spend millions of dollars every year in noise monitoring, responses, noise offices, and what have you. We want to be a good neighbor, and it's our commitment to you today that we're going to do that. We historically have worked through your TAVCO commission, which has been wonderful, and we've worked with your city staff. But I do hope that you'll entertain from time to time, allowing us to come back and just give you direct updates as well, so we can share what's happening at the airport. And so with that, I'd be happy to, we're requesting your concurrence with the plan that we presented. We're happy to provide more details as you have them, answer any questions you might have. And with that, Jordan, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have. Thank you, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Let's see, I have one quick question, I guess, just for the city manager. So, you know, I liked the presentation, very informative. I'm definitely not an aviation expert. I know just about enough to be dangerous, but I figured I would ask you if in the, you know, sort of our staff reviewing the presentation, if they had any concerns about anything that was laid out in the presentation? Because I didn't, but just want to make sure that I'm not missing anything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We met with Mr. Makovsky and other Phoenix officials a little over a week ago, where we talked about that he would be able to, with his staff, come and do this presentation. The presentation was made available to us, and we walked through it earlier this week and then put it in the packet. The materials and the factual basis for the materials all looked very much in order. The question that is being asked of you by the airport in their second-to-last slide about support, I would just say that, I know, is part of a larger conversation that we're having with the airport, that I think, it's fair to say, I think it's been productive as of late, and I thought the meeting we had was a good one. I know that Sonia Blaine, who was at that meeting, and myself are intending to speak more to council about this at an upcoming executive session. So for that piece of it, just understand that we want to have an opportunity to talk about what's in this request slide in a more comprehensive way with some of the other details of ongoing conversations with the airport that should be taken all at once at that time. So while I certainly understand and appreciate the slide and why it was put out there, and that is Sky Harbor's position, I would just say that with the exception of that, there was nothing factually that we thought was a problem. It appeared to be a good summary of what they're looking to do out there as part of the CAMP project.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the presentation, lots of good information, and that's how I felt as I was watching it as well, and kind of listening to what you and Jordan were presenting, Mr. Makovsky, so I appreciate that. And, you know, I'm very comfortable, Mr. City Manager, with the path that you outlined, but I feel very confident about where we're going here. I mean, the plan, the plan to me looks good, and I just want to make sure that staff has a thorough chance to kind of vet everything. But I, but from a very preliminary sense, I feel very good about the presentation and did not see any red flags on my issue that raised any alarm or concern to me. Counsel? Oh, Counsel of the Bar?
No, I just want to say thank you, thank you, Chad. I mean, even this information was just for the general public, for us to know and our residents to know. I think it's very beneficial. I do appreciate, maybe often, we having these conversations. I think it's great. Obviously, we're the back end of the airport, Tempe is, and I think when--
I would have framed it as the front end.
Yeah, like, I know where you're at. But, and I think this is great dialogue, at the end of the day. I know that in my 15 years of doing this, I think we've had, and I can only recount maybe one presentation, possibly. And I think that being our partner, and obviously, and I think you said it best, it is the convenience we enjoy, right? So I think that with that convenience, obviously, just having that education for our residents is really huge. And I think the one big question I had is, where's the pool going to be at the hotel?
Well, that's yet to be determined, but there will be a pool, I can promise you that.
I'll say one other quick thing about the convenience, too, and I probably should not admit this in public, but there was a situation a couple of months back where I was running very badly late, getting up early in the morning. All of you know how much I love to get up early in the morning. And by the time I actually called the Uber to come take me to the airport, I got the alert from the plane saying, "Now boarding", and I was still at my place in downtown Tempe. By the time the Uber got there and got me to the airport, I was able to still get to Sky Harbor on time and get on the plane, and I left successfully. So talking about, once again, that being a huge economic engine and revenue generator for a lot of what's going on in downtown Tempe. And when people talk about the central location, I know you have a lot of experience with DFW, and I lived in Michigan for nine years, and I remember the 45-minute drive that it took me many times from Ann Arbor and other parts, Sterling Heights, Farming and Hills, to get to DFW. It was not nearly as convenient as Sky Harbor, the way that it's laid out, and the central location is clearly a benefit to all of us, including very much the city of Tempe. My question was going to be, too, is there any kind of a, you know, talking about support for the CAMP plan? From a timeline standpoint, is there any kind of drop-dead date where you say, hey, we really need to have an answer by the Tempe City Council by this point?
Well, it's our request, Mayor, it's a great question. It's our request that the council consider this at the upcoming executive session, and we would like to get some sense as to the council's position on this within the coming month or so. That said, what we want to assure you is, even your acceptance or support, that does not eliminate your opportunity to further comment, because we're going to have the NEPA process, which affords the community, as well as this body, to really dive into the environmental process. Mr. Feld had mentioned that for the two projects at the top of the list, the taxiway and our north concourse, that's going to be available later this spring, or maybe this midsummer, for everybody to look at. So that, even your support today does not negate your opportunity to further comment based on what you're seeing when the details are further refined.
That sounds good. I was going to ask you, Mr. City Manager, we have an executive session next Thursday. Would it be too soon to ask this to be scheduled for then, just so we can move at a kind of all deliberate speed to get them an answer?
No, I think that that should be fine. We would want to talk to our aviation consultant to confirm her availability. But other than that, I think that should work.
Okay, so yeah, let's definitely tentatively plan, just because I want to make sure we're giving you some certainty as well on our end that we will get those answers ASAP and have the group meet and make a determination so we can get you an answer within the month. We understand that this is timely for Sky Harbor, and we definitely do not want you as a partner waiting, you know, to hear back from us. So we'll try to get that scheduled for next Thursday and try to get you an answer as soon as humanly possible.
We're grateful for that, Mayor, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anyone else, council, any questions?
All right.
Chad, thank you so very much. Appreciate the presentation. All right. Next up, we have item 3B, Street and Park Renaming Committee update. Mr. City Manager, very different spot for you here.
I know, this is my first time--
Madeline, good to see you.
--being able to come down to the new podium in the remodeled chambers to present to council. But if it's going to be the first time, it might as well be for something as significant and historic as the process that-- and I want to thank council for the opportunity to serve as the chairman of the Ad hoc Renaming Committee. It's really, it's been an honor, and it's been an honor to vet, seriously vet, a lot of really strong replacement names for these affected streets and parks. And it's been an honor to get to know the members of the community that you selected to be on this committee better. And the staff work has been just stellar on all of this. I'm sitting, I'm standing here right next to Madeleine McConville, our Marvin Andrews Scholar and projected graduate of the ASU MPA program in the spring of this year. Madeleine has been invaluable. Without her assistance, we couldn't have done this. Also, with our former chief of staff, Keely Varell-Hartzell, was also instrumental in getting us forward, as well as Brenda Avneys here and the entire History Museum staff for all the great work that they did to get us the information that we needed to make informed decisions. So with that, I'll go ahead and advance to the next slide. So as you recall, back in October of 2021, council, after extensive conversation and discussion, directed that the following streets and parks be renamed. Hudson Lane, West and East Laird Streets, Hudson Park, Harrelson Park, and Redden Park. During the pendency of time between that decision to then create that committee to look at those facilities, there were three renaming's that the Tempe Elementary School District did. For Gillinland Middle School is now named Geneva Epps Mosley Middle School, Hudson Elementary School is now named Joseph P. Sperkelly Elementary School, and Laird School is going to be named Cecil Shamlee Elementary School. So I'll just also note that one of our committee members was from the school district as well, and we'll get to that. So their process, while running parallel to ours, actually predated ours in terms of the renaming just slightly. Here's a list of the individuals who participated as advisory crew members. As you can see, it's representative of a number of your city boards and commissions. I know Mr. Kessler is here. I don't know if there are any other members of the committee who might want to stand and be recognized.
I think so.
Participation was excellent.
Thank you, Mel.
I will say Mel did come to every single meeting, and we had three in-person meetings and one virtual, so a total of four. We're going to get to that in the slide. And again, as you can see, it represents a true cross-section of this community, political leaders, community leaders, people from the schools as well, Monica Trejo on the Tempe Elementary School Board as well. So the appointments were finalized in August of last year. As I said earlier, we held four committee meetings. We opened the online public forum on the city of Tempe website for the dates between September 22nd through November 30th. We sent over 3,000 postcards to potential impacted residents in November of 2022, and we did some additional public outreach as we continued down the process, including having special meetings with the Four Southern Tribes. And our individual committee members also did outreach in between meetings and reported back on those outreach efforts.
So additional information about public inputs. Like Andrew said, you know, we had the public forum that went out for over a month. We had about 203 responses, 93 were registered, so people provided their information, so we were able to see where they're from. The map kind of shows where those people had filled out the survey, where they, you know, determined their home address to be. You can kind of see clusters surrounding West Laird, Hudson, Redden, and Harrelson. Can't really say for sure, but that postcard that we did send out went specifically to residents who lived on those streets or who were surrounding those parks. So most people who potentially could be impacted by those renaming's were notified in some shape or form. Again, 66 of those people were inside of Tempe. As you can see, there were 27 outside of Tempe, so potentially family members, other concerned citizens. Public comment at meetings. So we allowed people to provide public comment. You know, I think we had between one in five people at every meeting kind of share their public input about the process, about the renaming, kind of depending on their perspective. Council communicators, we received a lot of council communicators on this, as you guys know, direct emails to Keely, city manager Andrew Ching, myself, the committee members, so a breadth of public input that was received. Again, we had stakeholder meetings, I had the opportunity of going to the Four Southern Tribes meeting, kind of speaking with them, getting their consultation on things. Yeah, I think that's about it. So how did, what did we do? So we received about 200 different names, you know, these names kind of, you know, were vast. Plans, Tempe pioneers, political figures, civil rights activists. There was also an option of using potentially different family names, you know, so let's say Redden Park, the potential was renaming Redden Park after a different family member that wasn't associated with the KKK. So, you know, we got those potential names and feedback. So how did we narrow down the names? The committee really wanted to focus on two criteria. The first was honoring people who had passed, and then they really wanted to take what they called a restorative approach. You know, their definition, and my understanding, was that their definition of restorative was focusing on the groups and people who were targeted historically by the KKK and, you know, harmed on a daily basis by racial injustices. So Keely, you know, took a big part in this. She organized all the names that were received, and by the end of it, we received roughly 41 restorative names that kind of met that criteria of the committee. So by the end of it, the committee really were able to focus on those 41 names. After that, the committee members forwarded their top 10 names to Keely, or brought those top 10 names to the December 7th meeting to help kind of narrow it down. And then at the last meeting, December 7th, and then the 14th meeting, we were able to decide on the six names and then four alternatives for future consideration.
So here are the six names, proposed renaming's. First, for West Laird Street, the recommendation from the committee is to rename it Romo Jones Street, after Adolfo Romo and Joaquina Jones. For Redden Park, the recommendation is to rename it Michelle Brooks Tatrous Park. For Hudson Park, the recommendation is to rename it Park de Sotelo Sosa. For Harrelson Park, the recommendation is to rename it Mary and Moses Green Park. For Hudson Lane, the recommendation is to rename it Thomas Lane, after Maggie and Theodore Thomas. And lastly, for East Laird Street, the recommendation from the committee is to rename it Ragsdale Street, after Lincoln Ragsdale. And we're going to go into each one of these recommendations individually.
The first is Michelle Brooks Tatrous. Before I start, I really want to mention that these lists that we, you know, these bullet points aren't exhaustive. You know, the work of the people who, you know, were recommended, you know, have a long list of work, not only in Tempe, but the Phoenix Greater Valley. So Michelle Brooks Tatrous was not only a community activist, a philanthropist, but a longtime Tempe resident. As you know, she was instrumental in bringing the Juneteenth celebration and the Crown Act to the city of Tempe. She was a member on the African-American Advisory Committee for 14 years. In this role, she also served as a chair. Through this role, she also worked to provide scholarships for Tempe high school students. Her collaboration on African-American experience in Tempe was vital to that book being published. That's a book that we cited throughout the committee's process a ton. The information is incredibly helpful. She also served as a scout troop leader for both the Boys and Girl Scouts of America. And finally, she provided education to the community as a whole, as a member of the Metro Sun Chapter of the National Council of Negro Women.
Next, Romo Jones Street. This is after the Latino pioneer family of Adolfo Romo and Joaquina Jones. They were married, although Joaquina did keep her maiden name. They were the family that was involved in the significant 1925 anti-segregation lawsuit against the Tempe Elementary School District, Romo versus Laird. At that time, the judge ruled that the school had to admit Hispanic children, when previous to that, they did not, as a matter of policy. And that case set an early precedent, well in advance of Brown versus Board of Education, the US Supreme Court case back in the 20s, that would ultimately benefit children of all races. At the time, the district denied enrollment to the Romo Jones children at the 10th Street School due to their ethnicity. So there is a direct connection between the work that they did in the 1920s and the renaming specifically for Laird, who was the defendant at the time, who was being sued by them for letting their children go to school at the public school.
So next is Mary and Moses Green Park. Mary and Moses were mother and son. So they were another African-American pioneer family. You can kind of see on the graph of what their homestead was in 1911, which is now the modern intersection of Warner and Whirl. They were the first African-American landowners in what is now Tempe. Mary Green homesteaded the 160 acres, as you can see, in 1888. She had three children. They all lived in Tempe, Moses, Ada, and Fred. And Moses and Fred were also farmers and ranchers in Tempe and Chandler districts.
Next, Thomas Lane, to be named after Maggie and Theodore Thomas. They were an African-American pioneer family that moved to the Phoenix area in the 1990s and eventually relocated to the area that's now incorporated within Tempe in 1906. He was a local business owner, Theodore, purchasing a barber shop on Mill Avenue back at that time, and possibly, although we haven't been able to fully confirm, we strongly believe that he was a Buffalo soldier who served in the US Army in that capacity. He was a pitcher for a local baseball team, a segregated baseball team made up of, quote-unquote, colored barbers. The family rented housing to African-American students at what is now known as Arizona State University, due to the fact that there was active housing discrimination on campus at the time. So they provided a place to live for African-American students at the time. They promoted early Juneteenth celebrations within the state of Arizona, including near Tucson in 1908 and probably in other years as well. And they were very involved civically in church groups and lots of other community activities. So they are well-known and established as a pioneering African-American family in this area.
Lincoln Ragsdale. So he was an African-American businessman. He was also a Tuskegee Airmen, which is core in World War II. He was a civil rights activist who was a force behind education and housing desegregation in the Phoenix area. He was also elected to the Greater Phoenix Council for Civil Unity Board of Directors. He was an ASU alumnus. He graduated with his BS in economics, and he was instrumental in bringing Dr. Martin Luther King to campus in 1964. This is when Dr. Martin Luther King came to campus. This is when Ragsdale was a Tuskegee Airmen at Luke Airfield. He was, again, an ASU alumnus. He was also, he also had purchased a home north of the Red Line in an all-white neighborhood. Him and his wife had organized a 700-person march. You know, his work is extensive. One of the famous quotes was, "You can accept, rebel, or excel."
Park de Sotelo Sosa. The recommendation from the committee was to name this park, now known as Hudson Park, after both the Sotelo family and the Sosa family. We'll talk first about the Sosa family. They were a multi-generational Latino pioneer family. They're pictured, several of them are pictured in the photograph on the right side of the slide. They homesteaded near the area that is now modern-day Hudson Park. They were instrumental in agriculture and canal construction, including the Roosevelt Dam. Juan Sosa was an influential leader in the Hispanic community and also served as a deputy sheriff to then Sheriff Carl Hayden, who I believe later went on to be Senator Carl Hayden prior to that. The Sotelo family, another pioneering Hispanic family in the area of city of Tempe. Manuela Sotelo was known at the time as the Mexican mother of Tempe. She moved to Tempe with her children after the death of her husband in 1871. They owned, again, a 160-acre ranch in the area near where Tempe Creamery is on A Street. You can see that designated in the map there on the right side of your slide. The land was originally purchased by her husband prior to 1871. She was a frontierswoman, and she's well-respected and is still very highly regarded in the community as a pioneering family in the city of Tempe. After we closed committee business and the recommendations were made, we received additional information from Ty Lee. Ty Lee is a direct descendant of both the Sotelo family and the Sosa family. He appreciated, I think, the efforts of the committee, but he had a suggestion that he wanted to make to the council, and we placed it in this slide. His suggestion, as a direct family member of both families, was that you could, if you wanted to, name Hudson Park after the Sosa family because their historical roots were close to that park, but then go to the area that is the historic location of Rancho de Sotelo, which is, again, designated on the map on the slide, and put special recognition in the form of street sign toppers or recognition plaques or other historical markers within the area to let people who are in and around that area know that this was, at one time, the historic homesteaded area of the Sotelo family. So that recommendation came in, and we thought it was worthy of your consideration this afternoon.
The final aspect of the committee's recommendations were to additionally give you, provide you, council, four additional names for future consideration. There were 10 names at the end of it that were hard to narrow down from the committee's perspective, so they thought it was important to provide you these names for future consideration of city facility renaming's or namings. The first is Ho Ho Kamel, an Odohom ward for Butterfly. The next is San Pablo, which was a Latino community established during the pioneer days of Tempe. After ASU used eminent domain, property takeover in the late 1950s, many of these residents then relocated to Victory Acres and other nearby Tempe neighborhoods. The next is Okama, neighboring Black farm owner community established in the 1920s as a longstanding exclusionary policies and practices in Tempe. When they began to crumble in the 1950s and 1970s, many of these African-American families in Okama pushed to buy homes in Tempe. The last one is Obregon for Pete, Pedro Obregon. He was a Latino Tempe pioneer and farmer who worked at Hayden Flower Mill. He was also a civil rights advocate and was known as a humanitarian by the community. You know, Obregon was one that we didn't really have a ton of information about in the beginning. I had talked to Dominic and Dominic's sister, who are descendants of Pete, so we were able to gain additional information, you know, unfortunately, when the committee closed, but.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Yes. Next steps. So where we're at right now, you guys received a very long, extensive list of my gibberish. Hopefully, it made sense, but there's, you know, a lot to do even after you guys, you know, tentatively vote and pursue your recommendations. So due to city code, we have to present to DRC, and this is just on the street signs. DRC doesn't have jurisdiction over parks. So Andrew and I will be presenting at DRC on the 14th. Then, tentatively, March 2nd, we'll bring a resolution to city council. This resolution will then ideally set an effective date for when these renaming's will take place. You know, realistically, it would be July 1st or an August 1st. Still waiting to hear back kind of what's realistic for certain departments. Then the reimbursement process. This is one that we're still kind of flushing out. So you have impacted residents. There are no businesses that, you know, are on these streets, so no business will be impacted, but we have roughly 173 impacted residents who, you know, ideally, if you know the city of Phoenix process, they reimburse, you know, cost various costs to these residents for renaming their streets. Our idea is that we'll provide them $100 cap, you know, for any reimbursement cost that they may incur. The most popular one is their driver's license, this is only $12 to replace, but of course, there are maybe other things that come up, such as, you know, checks, business cards, signs that may say their street, et cetera. And there will be, you know, of course, a special consideration for any costs that may be over that $100. So with, you know, we rounded up to 175. With roughly 175 residents being impacted, the max budgetary impact for that would be $17,500. I'd actually spoke to the city of Phoenix, their project manager, for their renaming process. They had 150 impacted residents. Their budget, you know, the portion that they only had spent was 2,000, so I don't think we're going to hit that 17,000 number, but just having that as a threshold is good. What else? I think that's it. So communications for residents. We have already sent out a postcard, as Andrew talked about. Once you guys officially decide to rename, or what, you know, street renaming will be, then letters will be sent out to impacted residents, specifically a certified letter to make sure that, you know, all those 173 residents have received that information. There's also a website up right now, but there'll be a specific website within the main renaming website that'll provide information for impacted residents, including information on how to be reimbursed, what things you need to be reimbursed for, what things you may need to just change on your own, just kind of outlining all the basic information, kind of a checklist, so residents can get all of that stuff taken care of. We'll also have 3-1-1, well-versed on kind of what's going on, so they can provide answers to any questions. I'll also have my information up on the website in case there's any logistic questions that people would like to talk to me about. The next one is coordination with city departments. Our departments have been wonderful. I've been able to meet with a decent amount of them, engineering and transportation, community services, to kind of figure out logistically, how is this going to work? How are we going to implement this effectively? So on that, I've also been working with Stephanie Dietrich and her team. Public safety is a huge one. We need to make sure that the addresses that are being changed are noted for our fire and police services, so there's no issues. Additionally, Google, that goes with coordination with external groups, you know, coordinating with the post office is actually pretty easy. Google's one that Stephanie Dietrich and her team are taking care of. And the next is park and street reopening events. You know, once, you know, we get through all of these next steps in implementation, then there'll be, you know, a certain amount of events and reopening ceremonies, you know, bringing-- know, bringing in the family members of these people and, you know, families, just so, you know, we all can celebrate the reopenings. I think that's about it. You know, there's always more information. I'm updating this weekly on the renaming page, so people can always go to that for additional information.
And with that, Mayor and Council, we welcome your input, comment, feedback, and direction. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you for the presentation, Councilmember Garland.
Thank you so much. I love listening to the descriptions of the people that you guys have chosen and worked with. It makes me really proud to be in Tempe, to learn the history, so I appreciate that. Great cross-section of people that were on your committee. I think you really touched a lot of different areas. I appreciate that. Love the public outreach. And I like your restorative approach. I like that word. I think that works really well. We got an email in from a member of our community who talked about Lincoln Ragsdale's name being used and not having that as an actual person who lived in the City of Tempe. And I was reading through her email and doing a little bit of research on my own, and I tend to agree that the Laird Street name for Lincoln Ragsdale, though it's absolutely amazing person, does not seem to me to really fit in Law Victoria. And I'm looking on here, and I'm looking at, maybe that's a Pedro Obregon, now that you've got more information, that that's a possibility of doing that. And I'm just thinking about the residents of Law Victoria, what that community is alike, and how maybe naming it something different than Lincoln Ragsdale might be important to that community also. So that's just a thought from mine. And then something regarding, you guys mentioned Ty and that additional separating the Sosa and the Sotelo. Just for your information, about a year ago, I met with Ben Furlong, who is writing a book on the Native American history in Tempe, working with the native tribes. It's going to be an incredible book. And one of the things that he had mentioned to me is he thought it was really important that we start making historical markers in the City of Tempe, not just for Native Americans, but for other communities. If you go into some neighborhoods like our cities like Mesa, you walk down a street and you can see a historic marker, and it tells you a little bit about that. So in the point that Ty made, that maybe not, unless he wants it, necessarily need to be separated, because I really, I met with the Tempe Historical Society yesterday and mentioned that to them, that I seen if they can kind of champion and work with me, but really looking at doing historical markers throughout the City of Tempe. So that may be something that we could look at for there. I think that's it. But I just want to say thank you so much. You guys have done great work. I just had that, just one suggestion.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. I'll go to Councilmember Hodge, and then I've got some comments, too.
Okay. I did hear what you said, Councilmember Garland, but I also want to put out there, that Lincoln Ragsdale, he buried majority of the Black community in Tempe. So he might not have lived here, but he impacted Tempe in so many different ways. He was an ASU student. I actually knew him personally. There was no one buried in the Black community that didn't go through Ragsdale, and that was part of Tempe. So I feel very passionate about him, so I would love to have a place for him somewhere because he was very instrumental. He might not have lived here, but he was a big part of Tempe.
Yes, absolutely.
That's a great point. In the letter that came from Dr. Lerner, it also was a recommendation in there about putting a plaque up where he met with Martin Luther King at ASU and doing a plaque with that designation and information on there to make sure we still honor him. So that was a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Councilmember Devaro, then I'll jump in after that.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, guys, for your time on this. I know this is a very, obviously, sensitive issue and making sure that we're doing this right. And I appreciate you investigating and making sure that, you know, we get the appropriate names for the appropriate destinations. And in terms of, I know we look at the list, African-American, Hispanic, representatives of each, you know, area and stuff, and I think I have to, just to Councilmember Garland's point with Lincoln Ragsdale, I think what we're hearing, is it a better, you know, is there a better name for that community, especially being highly Hispanic for a number of years in that area of Navarro there? So I just want to make sure that, you know, we do that representation correctly. Also, when you looked at, I looked at the chart with, especially the street names, obviously, we're affecting that, right? When you change Laird, what were the, I saw two people on that street. What were their concerns by chance?
So I don't know the specifics for each, you know, there weren't specific concerns about the renaming. There were just name recommendations. So the forum that was open, we're asking people for their name recommendations. So we didn't ask them about their concerns of the naming. We just asked their input on what to rename those streets.
In general, was there any concerns or was there any discussion about street names and the impacts?
From the input that we received on the forum, no. We received a few joke names, but, you know, those were wiped away. But there were no specific concerns from residents from that forum about the renaming. It was just, I mean, I guess if you connect concerns with, like, naming them after, you know, historically underrepresented communities, those were concerns that were brought up. There was also some input from, you know, family members of, like, Reddins and the Lairds, you know, providing their concerns over the renaming and, quote-unquote, cancel culture, that kind of stuff. So, like I said, there weren't any specific concerns about, like, you know, the overall process, just kind of like what the new names would be.
So what I want to get to is, so we didn't really talk about the process
Maybe you can...
of what the impacts will be to the people on those streets. Because we got two people that apparently were talking about just the renaming part, but as a city, I think we have an obligation for the residents to understand the process of what's going to happen. You talked about driver's license bills. What about house deeds? What about all these things that if they didn't know or they don't fix it, what happens?
Absolutely. So, yeah, that's what that website, you know, we didn't want to prematurely put out that website if you guys decided at the end of the day to not pursue the renaming. So the website that I was discussing will have all that information. Do you need to worry about your house deeds? Maybe, maybe not. I don't have that information in front of me. But specific things that you do need to change will be addressed on there. Like I said, it'll be like a checklist. There are certain things that, yes, you do need to update your address on, but you don't need to pay for those. The only thing that you need to necessarily pay for would be your driver's license, like I said. So all that information will go out to residents in that certified letter, once that, you know, once you guys officially vote on it. But as of right now, that postcard was sent out, letting them know of the renaming process and letting them go to that website. That does detail, you know, that the renaming will happen and that there will be additional information on how to navigate this renaming to them.
And just to that point, I think there's a concern that we, I think, maybe beforehand, I appreciate what your response is, and, you know, you think about Laird and, you know, every mission we had, yeah. So with that said, though, and I'll get, I have a few questions. With that said, I think we need to tell our residents, especially on those streets, hey, this is what's happening, and here's the process that's potentially coming down the road. And what are the concerns? Or how do we guide? Because we talk about here, here's a checklist to follow and how you do it. But I kind of almost think that, you know, do we have someone in the city that can actually manage people? Because you've got elderly that are on these streets that probably don't know how to navigate all this stuff, and they have family members that are living outside. So I think it's something that the city probably needs to maybe invest in to make sure there's someone to guide someone or a person through that process at the end of the day. I think that's, we're doing this. I mean, this is on us, right?
Yep.
So, and then with that said, I know we talked about the street names, and with Laird, it was so close to 9th, it could have been 8th Street. Was a consideration just to name it 8th Street? Because you have, in that area, especially on the west side, it's 9th, 10th, and a couple names, but easily, it could be right in the line of 8th Street. And I don't know if that was...
Yeah, that wasn't one of the names that I recall that was submitted as a name. And also, once the committee decided upon the restorative approach, they were specifically using that criteria. So letter names or numbered names were not under consideration, nor do I recall any of them actually being submitted. But to your point, I mean, that's another approach. It just wasn't one that the committee adopted.
And I do value the recognition of names, and it's one of those things, it's kind of like what we're going through right now, you know, vetting the individual out, you know? Are we going to be caught down the road again? You know, that's going to be something from the community. I mean, we talked about this at the very beginning, you know, and, hey, but what about your history and all this other stuff, you know? How did we vet these people, you know, in terms of their background, right? So I hope we did that, too. And I hope that we're capturing, and I think, hopefully, we are, with our culture, too. We had a very large Hispanic community, a Native Indian community, and African-American. Are we balancing, you know, on this list, we see more African-American, but at the end of the day, when we look at our streets, yeah, we lack probably in those areas. So I hope that's the balance we're gaining, which is, I think, is appropriate. And then one thing, and one name that came to mind, is Morrison Warren. Was that person, that family ever brought up in the discussion? Morrison Warren was an educator, a professor at ASU, African-American, did a number of things within, not only Arizona State, lived here in Tempe, the family's from Tempe. His sons, actually, one of them was the first Black football player at Stanford who received a degree and then came back in finance and came back and helped out with the banking in that area. His current other son, Kevin Warren, is the commissioner for the Big Ten. It's a very educational, prestigious family that I hope could get looked into, because I think they're very significant in what they did and the impacts they made here, especially in Tempe.
Sure. I don't recall Morrison Warren being one of the names on the list. We got a lot of names. There were other restorative names, like we said, 41, that after the committee vetted, they, these were the ones that rose to the top. I would just say that part of the reason why we included the four additional names is a recognition that as this council and future councils think about the naming and renaming of parks, streets, whatever it might be in the future, that there can be a list of names that you can look at and utilize. And certainly, if there's council consensus, someone like Morrison Warren or others that council may want to include on that list can be kept by staff and can be utilized for future renaming as well.
Well, my opinion, and this is up to the council, is at least to look into that individual and the family and the recognition that they've done and the impact they've made in this community. I think that's worthwhile, in my opinion. I, you know, I'm not so, you know, I like what you guys are doing and stuff. The Ragsdale thing, I was impressed with them, absolutely. But is it the right person for the right location, right area? Is that the right recognitional place we need to do that in, kind of thing? Where I would hope, and my recommendation, if the council, just look into Morrison Warren.
I've got a couple of things. I want to get to Vice Mayor Adams, so I will be very, very quick. My recommendations were, we can kind of go back around at the end. I did like Tylee's suggestion that you listed about kind of sort of decoupling the Sotelo-Sosa names and doing exactly what he talked about, especially as someone being a direct descendant of those two families. I think that's something that I would 100% endorse on my end. The second one was something that Councilmember Garland talked about with regard to East Laird. I also was very impressed with Pete Obregon as well and thought that he met all of the criteria, especially when you're talking about the Escalante La Victoria neighborhood, which has been a predominantly Latino-Hispanic neighborhood pretty much since its inception in the City of Tempe. And so I do think that that might be a better name for East Laird, is Obregon is sort of my pick. But then to Councilmember Hodge's point regarding Lincoln Ragsdale and what he did. Now, we know, speaking of, I see Mr. Makovsky's still here. There's a portion of Sky Harbor Airport that's named after Lincoln Ragsdale. I know ASU also has a scholarship program that's named after Lincoln Ragsdale as well. Clearly, he was a person who was very prominent, not just simply in Tempe, but throughout the Greater Phoenix community and Arizona. My honest thought would be, is that I would love to see if we could talk about, and I love the story, talking about how he was instrumental in bringing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to Arizona State University. So I've got a couple of options on this, but my first option would be if there is a partnership to be had with the university, perhaps, to do exactly what Dr. Lerner talked about, to really signify that place right around Old Main, which is still in Tempe, and really make sure that we are noting Lincoln Ragsdale's significance to the city and exactly what he did in that area. The second one I actually suggested I have is to a joint sort of renaming of 6th Street Park to Martin Luther King Jr. Park and Lincoln Ragsdale Park, because I think it tells a really powerful story about exactly what Lincoln Ragsdale's role was in bringing Martin Luther King Jr. to the City of Tempe. But it's also very much a story about who we are as a community and who we strive to be. We don't currently have a street in the City of Tempe named after MLK like a lot of other cities. I know Mesa just renamed one within the last two weeks. So I think that is something that we should address. But I think, given the fact that those two were joined together based on that story from 1964, I would love, and certainly, I don't think anyone has an emotional attachment to the name 6th Street Park. And so from my perspective, that would probably be the most boring name of a park we have in the entire city. So my perspective would be, I would like for the council to explore that, to have it be basically a Martin Luther King Jr. slash Lincoln Ragsdale Park right here in front of Tempe City Hall. I think that sends a very strong message, and I think it sort of accomplishes what Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Hodge were both talking about. But with that, I'll turn to Vice Mayor Adams, so we can go back around.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with both Councilmember Hodge and Mayor on your Lincoln Ragsdale proposal. I think it's a great idea, so I'll be supporting that. And I'm also very happy that this was such an inclusive process. That doesn't always happen, and I really love that, that you've got a great cross-section of the community involved in this process. So that's awesome. And so I'm comfortable with, you know, most of the recommendations. I just would like to incorporate Lincoln Ragsdale into the picture. Sounds like the mayor, as usual, has a great idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, just as, just to make sure, the substitute name, then, the recommendation that you're suggesting would be Obregon for Laird Street as opposed to Ragsdale for Laird Street?
That's my recommendation, as I heard Councilmember Garland as well, but...
And then the second part is the renaming of 6th Street. Okay.
Yes.
6th Street part, okay. Thank you.
Let me go to Councilmember Chin and then Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you, Mayor. Just first, thank you to the committee. I know that there were many hours spent, and there will be some, a few hours more spent, but this is an important process, and the participation is important for our community. So I appreciate the effort. Second, just, I need to weigh in. Before we begin assuming ASU can name things, they have to follow different policies and procedures. So we could suggest, but they are under different obligations for naming spaces. Right.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. A very good point. So, Councilmember Hodge.
Okay. I just want to say, Mayor, I really love the idea of having Martin Luther King and Lincoln Ragsdale named after, right in front of the City Hall. It's important to me because in my church, we fed Lincoln Ragsdale and Martin Luther King, they ate, that's where they had their meal at, at South Phoenix Baptist Church with my pastor. So it's very important to me. That's a very important part of my life, even though I wasn't there. That's the church I was raised in since I was two years old. So it's important. That's why, thank you, guys, for looking at it, because they're all, this is like very touching to me, because I've had people who have died by hanging by the Ku Klux Klan. So I understand what this means to me emotionally. I had a cousin who died only 15 years ago in South Carolina by hanging. So it's very important. This is very emotional to me. So, and I just want to tell the Brooks family, I know you're still here, that, you know, Michelle would love this. And I'm going to stop before I start crying, because it's really hard. But thank you, Mayor. I appreciate, I do agree with everything everybody's saying, and I love your compromise with bringing that. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for supporting that, because it is really important to me. So thank you.
Thank you. Question for you both. When do you, I just kind of want to make sure I'm also respected, what Councilmember Devaro requested as well. When would you need an absolute final from us on this item? Because I know you're waiting to start the next round of process in terms of all of the notifications. So I want to, just want to get your sense from a timing standpoint.
Sure. I mean, we were hoping to get direction on these specific sites, the ones that were identified, coming out of the October 21 council meeting today, if possible. The renaming of 6th Street Park, I suppose, if it was council's pleasure, we could do some outreach on that. To Councilmember Devaro's point about the additional name that he submitted today, I mean, we can certainly look at that and for other place names, you know, all that stuff can happen. But for those facilities, the streets and the parks that were identified for renaming, the sooner the better. If you have consensus tonight, that would enable us to move forward and give our presentation to the DRC next week.
Let me ask Councilmember Devaro a question. I don't want to put you on the spot. I was... I was just wondering with your comment about Morrison Warren, because I've read about him in the Tempe History Museum, actually. He's very much profiled in the exhibit about African Americans and their contributions to the city of Tempe. Is there a sort of specific location that you were sort of thinking of, or you were just thinking he was a prominent person in Tempe and I'd just like this explored more? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Or to the list of like future, because I know the committee did give that list, that's where we got Obergon from, he was one of the names that was given, not for an immediate naming, but would be a sort of verified name for future renaming. So I was just curious, that's all, so.
So, I mean, they, thank you, Mayor. They were a family that was in South Tempe, mainly by the lakes area, Scudder Park almost, you know, area was where they, a lot of them located at. The park just south of there, you know, was a possibility, but if it's, if it's for future naming locations or future street locations, I think that's a name to definitely look into and be recognized.
Because I was almost wondering too, I wonder, you know, we have other, we couldn't decide all of this now, but we also have other rooms and facilities at various city properties, multi-generational centers, Pile Center, things of that nature, Tempe Public Library, where you can rename meeting rooms and things of that nature, that would provide us with an opportunity to potentially do exactly what Councilmember Navarro is talking about, so.
And Mayor, that was, and what it came down to, you guys, here's the thing, you guys went through your vetting and all this stuff. It was, it was probably what I looked at was Michelle Brooks, and no disrespect to her or the family or anything like that. It's just here, I don't know how the process went, and here's a, here's a family name and that is recognizable, at least where I grew up, and then very recognizable in what they have accomplished in education, not only just him, but his whole entire family in this, in this community. That's why I was like weighing, if you're, weighing between Brooks and Warren, was that even a consideration of representation? And that's where I was probably leaning towards, but if it comes down to with either one, getting some other naming or representation at another location, I think that needs to be looked at too, but that's, that was my concern.
Yeah. Because I guess what I'm, what I'm kind of wondering too is, yeah, if there's a way to put, to add, you know, Morrison Warren to a list where we could do a little bit of additional vetting, but frankly, we could come back at a future meeting and talk about other city sites, you know, kind of once we are all more familiar, even with this, kind of, there's probably folks here who are more familiar than not with his background. Because to Councilmember Navarro's point, I mean, I think there are definitely other spots within the city, even if they are not parks or streets, but frankly, things in current buildings that are city-owned, where we don't have to go about changing any kind of, you know, driver's license, you know, house deed. So it would be very simple for us to kind of come back and have those conversations, I think, so.
And that, Mr. Mayor, to that point, that was sort of, I think, the idea behind why that eligibility list of additional names. We had more names than we did facilities, and they were names that the committee felt very strongly were worthwhile of council's consideration for future namings. Perhaps part of the direction today might be, if it was your pleasure, Mayor and Council, to kind of create an eligibility list that we maintain and as additional names, such as the one that Councilmember Navarro came up, or any other ones, could be added for the purpose of then researching, vetting, and saying, yes, you know, I think the term used was, it was verified. If we had a verified list of names that were, that could be used in the future for whatever namings or renaming's the council wanted to do, that could be immensely helpful, because then that process would be ongoing, it wouldn't require the impaneling of a special committee, you'd have control over that process for years to come to create that vetted list of eligible names.
And I don't want to volunteer the history staff, but they're the ones who did all the research for us.
They did.
So that may be.
I was going to write a brand out.
And like I said, there were a number of names and some really good, I even submitted a name of my former professor when I went to ASU Law School, who was a civil rights leader as well, who was the first black faculty and the only black faculty at ASU Law School for the first 25 years after it was founded in the mid 60s. So he was an excellent name. But like I said, he was considered, and these other names, in the wisdom of the committee, they felt were the ones that should be submitted to you. So a lot of, a lot of good, strong names, and that's good. It's good to have that much interest and, you know, and we welcome more names, if that's the council's pleasure.
So I've got four things here. I'm going to see if I can try to get some council consensus this evening for you, since you said you would, see if we could get there this evening. We're very much saying very similar things. So the first one was regarding adding Morrison Warren to kind of like a vetted approved list for, for a future renaming opportunity. I mean, but obviously what that would do is it would immediately kind of have, you know, Brendan, her team at the History Museum, begin to kind of look into the name and make sure they can do all the things that they did with all of the other names, and then if so, you know, quickly, you know, add that name, and we can come back, Councilmember Navarro, I think you'd schedule that to have that conversation, so if you...
That's fine.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. So is everyone okay with adding Morrison Warren to that list, or?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Chin?
I have a question. If there are other names we would like to add to the four other consideration list, how do you want that? When do you want that?
I guess there's a couple of ways it could go. If it was council's desire to set up a place where names could just be submitted, then they could be submitted, vetted, and assuming they're verified by our History Museum staff, they would just be added. Or we could come on a periodic basis to council and consider names if there's a desire or a consensus to add those names as well. It could be one or the other, or some combination thereof.
Yeah, we could probably give you one now.
Sure, if you've got one right now, you want to add to the list.
If you're working with a history museum, how about Bill Kajakawa?
Yeah, absolutely. Councilmember Garland?
I don't have a name to add, but I would, I think for me, because I'm a history buff, I would love it if you would come back occasionally and give us the stories, kind of like you did tonight. I mean, I learned a lot when I was reading the slides the other day, so I would kind of like a little short little presentation, just to kind of tell us about the family members who lived in Tempe.
Just to get additional clarification, would you guys want kind of like a separate website set up for, you know, community members to submit names periodically, and then those names are then given to the History Museum staff? So it, like, this website kind of lives on our website to kind of, for community members to continue this process, like you guys had mentioned?
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I mean, I am concerned that we had this big community process, and, you know, they went through a lot of, I'm sure, vetting, and I'm really uncomfortable just adding more work to them and to, because that's what we wanted. We wanted inclusive, and we, you know, I know that they worked really hard to get these names together, so I'm just not comfortable just sitting up here and saying, well, you know, I want to add this person, that person, whatever. I think we would need to really be respectful of the process, and I think there are, there are ways to get, Joel's about ready to explode here. So, but anyway, there are, I want to, I want to, you know, honor those people, though. So I think there's other ways we can do it and, and still make it really respectful of everything that they did in our history, but I don't want to be disrespectful of the committee's work, so, for whatever that's worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Navarro?
Mayor, with that said, I know, and I love your idea, Sixth Street, but it's, it's one of those things that we talk about, let's do it from the dais, and let's do this, and we didn't go through a process. I mean, because as much as I'm saying, hey, that sounds like a good idea, there might be a process of like, hey, I have to tell you this, here's a better location, and maybe here's a better idea. So with that in mind, I feel comfortable, my personally, just not to do things, I know we've done this in the past, and I probably said it something in the past, I hate doing things from the dais and changing that from the dais, but please consider.
Sure. No, thank you. I, I think the only, you know, reason I kind of made that suggestion, and I totally get what Councilmember Navarro is talking about, it's a, it's a big decision with the park. I think where I was coming from on that one was primarily the fact that the, you know, I mean, clearly we all know who MLK is and his impact, but, but the Ragsdale name went through all the appropriate vetting from the committee, so in a sense, we're already working with the name that the, that the committee vetted and that the staff also vetted as well. So I have a little less concern about that, but I understand what he's saying as well, that it's a big decision, and I want to make sure I respect that. But let me try to go through these, and if we don't, and if we don't, so I know we talked about, you know, Morrison Warren, we'll have to work out a process thing, but, you know, Councilmember Chin talked about Bill Kajakawa as well. So if there's a way we can talk about how we might do that going forward, I want to make sure we're also respectful of what Vice Mayor Adams said too, because this was a larger community process, but I want to make sure, since those names were already entered into the record, that they do end up getting the consideration they deserve. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. The other one, so going back to the other three suggestions here, was the notion of, lack of better term, sort of decoupling the Sotelo and Sosa names, whatever, to Tylee's suggestion. Was everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Also, oh, Councilmember Garland?
Okay, so the, but the decoupling thing was decoupling and adding name to another location.
Maybe we can go back to the slide perhaps, or?
So that's two issues, and so just a thought, and I, we'd have to probably talk to Tylee, but if, if we are going to eventually, hopefully, I could convince our community to do historical markers, would he still want to have the names together, knowing that we are going to eventually do a markers? I think that's a, I know Ty is here, I don't know if he's allowed to ask, answer that question, or if he does still want them separated. That's just curious.
I will, I will leave that up to Mr. Matheson. I know that the item's on the agenda. If he wants to speak, I guess he can, but I want to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would think it's probably okay for him to make a statement, if you want.
I always like to check with my lawyer, so it's very, it's very important, because I am not one. I should ask Ty, not to put you on the spot, but if you don't want to come up, that's totally fine, but if you had any thoughts to what Councilmember Garland said?
Thank you for this surprise opportunity to address you. For the record, my name is Tylee. I am addressing you today in my personal capacity as a fifth-generation Tempean. Councilmember Garland's point about whether or not going forward with a name, street name, mentioned on, you know, the city street, if there is going to be, I'm sorry, you said...
It's a, it's, this is, this is in my head, and just, yesterday, mentioned to the story, Historical Society, is doing historical markers, similar to what Mesa does in different parts of the community, when there's something really important we want to talk to people about.
Okay. So my, my thought on that is, going back to something that Scott Soliday, he was a former Tempe curator, the Tempe History Museum, in the 125th anniversary of Tempe, he kind of wrote an essay about the naming of Tempe streets. And he mentioned or highlighted the lack of Hispanic names of pioneer families, such as Sotelo and Sosa. And he mentioned that the reason that city streets are listed with names is because they provide a visible reminder. And what I am searching for is that visible reminder that is prominent of the Sotelo family. They were here in 1870, before Hayden arrived. They were instrumental in the founding of this community. And unfortunately, this area that you can see on the map, there is no real distinction of what it was, and it's kind of been lost to history. And I think that it's important that there is a prominent visible reminder of what this area was, who lived there, and how impactful it was to our community. So, yes, I do think that markers are important. Hopefully, we can have a marker there of Manuela Sotelo, but I also think that high visibility is important.
Thank you, Ty. Appreciate it.
If I can also mention, the committee also discussed plaques at each, at each of the renaming sites, kind of detailing why this Strater Park was renamed after them. That's something that I'm in discussion with Craig's team about to explore, so there would be these plaques or HR or QR codes that can give people additional information. So that was an idea that was also discussed by the committee too.
So Councilmember Garland, I guess I'll turn back to you. How do you feel, you know, after, you know, Ty's comments about, just curious?
I want to, I want to honor whatever Ty wants to honor for his family, especially since his family was chosen, his both names, so whatever Ty is comfortable with it, if, if we separate it, but, so my question is, if, if we separate it and do like the above markers, I'm thinking in my head like the Jim Blossoms. So if that's the markers that he's talking about, then that's, that's a different department in finance and all those things, it's different than what we're doing with just renaming. So I guess I should have asked Ty before I left, is, is that still something that you want to see, or is that just naming it Sotelo, but again, putting both names together, or is it separating them, still, I still not quite, because I know that putting those markers on the top are a different area.
And if you don't mind, I've had discussions with Michelle in transportation about those signs. We're waiting to hear back on a specific estimate for this 160-acre region, so I, there are discussions that are going around for those specific plaques on top of the signs that you're talking about. I just haven't gotten a certain budget estimate yet, but these discussions are occurring when this got brought up.
And I think it's, it's probably reasonable to assume that they would look a lot like what we do for historic neighborhood designations.
Yep.
Like Maple Ash and other neighborhoods around the city, where you have the designation of this special recognition area, or whatever it's called, on, you know, on signs within, street signs within the neighborhood. And it could also include a historical marker of sort, that's what Madeline was referring to, was the idea of having historic markers in the areas where these renaming's occurred, so that future generations would understand, it used to be named this, this was a recognized and understood to be unacceptable, now we're doing this, and that's the why.
I think that makes sense. It's, the recognition on the top of the street sign is great, but if it's, if it's only big enough to put a name on there, it's not going to tell a story. So I still think there's a historical marker that needs to be attached to that in the future, so.
That's definitely something the committee also wanted to see.
Great. I love it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. So I just wanted to see where that leaves us regarding the Sotelo, so the recommendation initially was, was Sotelo Sosa, and Ty's recommendation was to kind of, you know, pull them apart and do Parque de Sosa and Rancho de Sotelo as a special recognition area. Is the council okay with that, or do we want to do something different?
Yeah.
Good with that? Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Sounds like, Ty, your suggestion is, thumbs up, I'll take it. There we go. Thank you. No, this is good, this is good stuff. And I think the historical markers, to Councilmember Garland's point, are important, and I'm glad that the committee did bring that up during their deliberations as well. So that's one, so that, that one's taken care of. So Morrison Warren, no, no, that's two, actually. No, Morrison Warren and, and Ty's recommendation, that's adopted. The second one, the next one would be whether we want to talk about, instead of doing Ragsdale, to change, to change East Laird to Ragsdale, to East Laird to Obergon, was, was I know what Councilmember Garland and I both brought up. And so I guess I'll kind of look to my colleagues to see what their thoughts are about that. Councilmember Garland? I mean, I mean Chin. I'm looking at her and, I'm looking at her and then going over here.
It's fine.
The glasses.
It is, the glasses.
Right. Well, I want to make sure, deferring to the committee, does that meet with their main criteria, if we move to Obergon?
It was restorative, so yeah, that was recommended.
Sounds good. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay, so I'm, I'm just curious, are we going to still, I get what Councilmember Garland said, but we've already vetted Ragsdale, and we know Martin Luther King, so are we going to do the Sixth Street Park?
Oh, yeah, that was my next one, yeah.
That's my next question before I say anything else.
Okay. All right, well, let's, well, we could, we could take them out of order, and I can come back around. So my last one was the MLK Ragsdale Park for Sixth Street Park. Council, what do we think about that?
I want to, I want to do it.
I do too.
And I can do yes on the both of them then.
You are a shrewd negotiator, Councilmember Hodge. All right. So, what it sounds like, I've got consensus, unless anyone has any additional comments or questions, to add Morrison Warren and Bill Kajakawa to a future list here to be vetted for, you know, potential future renaming's, to take Tylee's suggestion for, for naming Parque de Sosa and Rancho de Sotelo. We would also then do, instead of East Laird being Ragsdale, would be East Laird to Pete Obergon, and then Sixth Street Park would then be named after Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Lincoln Ragsdale. Sounds good? Done? Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I was going to summarize, but you've already done it, so we're good to go. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. This was, this was a lot of work, and once again, since Mr. Kessler's here, I wanted to thank him as well for his service. I know Hannah Moulton-Balek sent in a letter too, from the committee, and just want to in a letter, too, from the committee, and just want to appreciate, this is, this is not, as Councilmember Raj talked about, this is not easy work, when you're talking about practicing kind of restorative justice and a lot of the, you know, the complaints you saw in some of the emails about woke and all of this stuff, as opposed to just simply, you know, the time is never wrong to do the right thing. And I'm really proud that this council's done that, and I'm proud that the committee actually spent a lot of painstaking work along with our staff, doing all the research and getting this done. And thank you to the families as well. And just to be very clear, the other recommendations for the Brooks family, that one was already good. We, we were good on that one. So, no, we, I don't, all right, everybody good? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up, item number four, call to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the program. Next up, item number five is committee of the whole. Item 5A, items ready for city council direction or status update? There are none. Any of the council committees for items 5B, 5B1, for human services and community safety, sustainability and economic vitality, or workforce readiness in livable communities, are there any updates from council members? Nope. Okay. The next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Council members may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any council members like to add an agenda item to a future issue review session? Councilmember Adams. Vice Mayor Adams, excuse me, excuse me.
No problem. I would like to add for future agenda items, I would like a presentation. I don't want this in a Friday packet. I would like it to be a presentation, because I see it as very, very important. And that's for the Smith Road Bike Lane near Culissac, that I toured that area the other day, and they're going to get, they're getting closer to getting done with it. And there'll be at least 1,000 bicyclists going back and forth using Smith Road. So I would like to get an update on, on the plan and the timeframe for execution of the bike lane. So if I could put that on for future agenda items, I would like that.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. City Manager?
Yep, got it. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
And the sooner the better for, for this, because we need to get it done. So.
Absolutely, Vice Mayor. Thanks.
So, I mean, could we have a timeframe?
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, can you and I chat kind of immediately afterwards and talk and look at the upcoming issue review sessions and make sure we can get this added quickly?
We'll get with Kara. I know that we have a couple coming up that are very crowded, but we also have a couple that are very light. So, yeah, when I hear that, I'm thinking maybe March.
March is great.
Okay, we'll shoot for March, and if for whatever reason that is not possible, I'll let you know. But I think it should be fine.
Perfect. One question, either, I guess, Mr. City Manager or Kara, do we know when we've got an update scheduled for the, for kind of like the downtown streetscape refresh? Do we know when that's, if that's scheduled already, or do I need to schedule that now?
It's reserved for February 23rd, but I do see it's a council committee meeting next week.
Okay, so February 23rd is good. I have no problem with that, even sooner. All right, sounds good. Councilmembers, any other future agenda items? Seeing none, that takes us to item number seven, mayor's announcements and city manager's announcements. I only have one announcement, which is to give a very, very happy anniversary to our city manager, Andrew Ching, who on February 8th, 2013, was named as the interim city manager here for the city. And then later, a couple of months later, was made permanent in April of 2013. Andrew is now celebrating 10 years as city manager here, which is no small feat. And, and prior to him being city manager, he was city attorney for quite a number of years. When I first came to the city back in 2008, that was the role that Andrew served in. So Andrew, how long have you been with the city in total years?
I started as a volunteer in the city in summer of 1992. So that's when I first started working for the city. So it's been over 30 years. Not continuous, because I worked at other places in between there. But that was my first work with the city, was that summer.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say, you know, congratulations on 10 years. We appreciate you and all the work that you do. And seriously, 10, 10 years at a job as a city manager is a very challenging job, so we appreciate your service to the city of Tempe, and I appreciate it as well. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, it's incredible, because usually, or, city managers don't last but five years. Amazing you got this far. We've got to watch this thing.
Councilman Raj?
I just want to say, did you give all your gray hair to us over in the city? Because you had a lot more black a couple of years ago.
I was going to say 10 years and 30 pounds, but if you want to focus on the, the hair, that's perfectly okay with me.
Yes, Councilmember Garland?
I just want to say how much I appreciate you. So I'm glad you're here. Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you so much.
10 years, all right. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it. And that's my only announcement for the evening, but next up, Mr. City Manager, any announcements? Can we leave those photos up for the rest of the evening?
Oh, jeez.
Please, Eddie, don't take, Eddie, do not take those, leave them up.
I only have, well, first of all, thank, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciate. I'll just, I'll just, I want to say two quick things. One, thank you for that. It's, I'm as energized and excited and honored and humbled to be working for the city of Tempe in this capacity as I was 10 years ago, and even before that. This is a special place, and what makes it special is small sample, but an important sample of the many incredible employees that I get to work with on a day-in, a day-out basis, and the additional 1,600 to 1,700 who are not here tonight, who make the city of Tempe great as an organization. And their work and what they do makes me excited to continue to work here and to be a part of that, because they are incredible and they do great work. We heard about it tonight, for instance, with Madeline and, and with the History Museum staff. That was a lot of work. What you heard today, it could have gone a million different directions, but it didn't. It went the right direction, because we have that kind of staff who pulls things together and gets things done. And it's hugely humbling and honoring to be a part of that group. On that note, and as long as we're speaking of milestones, I do want to take time to say that this week, at our monthly city manager's breakfast, where we recognize new employees and we honor long-tenured employees, that Rosencosty, our chief deputy city manager, celebrated a very significant milestone, 30 years with the city of Tempe. So, absolutely. And, you know, it's, it's just incredible to work with, with Rosa, and 30 years is huge. It means a lot. It means that she's committed to this organization and to this city, and to the community of the city of Tempe. And on a smaller basis, it also means that at the point, whenever it is that she decides to retire, her name will be enshrined on the third floor, on the plaques that recognize those employees who have 30-plus years of service. Given the long history of the city of Tempe, there's not that many names up there, and those that are, deserve that special recognition. And that recognition will be hers at the point she decides to retire. But until then, we just, we love to work with her, and we really appreciate all of her service to this great community. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. City Man. I was thinking more of kind of a, a basketball jersey, kind of hanging Rosa's jersey in the rafters, like the Boston Garden. So, no, Rosa, congratulations too, and thank you for your 30 years of service to the city of Tempe. You're an incredible employee here and a leader, and a person who's absolutely tireless. I mean, so, I mean, I, I mean, we're on the phone all the time about various things, and I, I just don't know how you get all the energy to do all the work that you do, but I sure appreciate the fact that you have it. And as, as Andrew talked about, and the passion for the city that you possess, I wanted to say thank you as well for everything you do. You guys are phenomenal people, and we really are fortunate to have you both here. So, thank you. Anyone else, Council?
Can I just say?
Yes.
Rosa, did you start when you were five, you know?
She said five, then you talked about Andrew's gray hair. See, this is, you know. And with that, item number eight is adjournment. Thank you for, Vice Mayor Adams, for playing us out with an incredible country song. The next work-study session is February 23rd, 2023, and we are adjourned.